Council meeting, it's Tuesday, February 11th at 7:30 in the evening. It's not snowing and the water ain't wet. And I'm still sore from shoveling the snow off my front walk so everybody can walk by. Let the record show that everybody is here, happy, dry, warm. It's nice to see you folks out there tonight. Let's just move promptly forward. You have minutes from January 14th and January 28th. Everything okay? Is that a motion?
No. I'll move to accept the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Visitor and public comment, we have Tracy Weston. Come on up to the microphone and good evening and welcome to City Council.
Thank you. I'm here to let you know that the Independence Folk County Women's Club turns 100 years old this month. And we're hosting an open house on March 1st at the Independence Women's Club located on Third Street, right behind Old Independence Library. We'll be having an open house from 4 to 7:00. And we'll be reviewing and having speakers speak on history of the club and the independence area, starting at 5:00.
Great.
And we'd like to invite anyone who's interested to come down and join us. And I think we would like to participate, share some of the history of Independence. They can contact me, Tracy Weston, at (503) 917-9188. And I'll be charliee independent.
That's great. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations. What day of the week is that?
On a Saturday.
Saturday? Okay. That's wonderful. And I think the lady right behind you is probably very interested in that, in that news story on 100 years in Independence. That's not a hint. Thank you very much and really appreciate you coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Congratulations on 100 years.
Yes. It's a big deal.
It is.
Our clubhouse has done a lot. The main thing that I know about something that we did, the land that libraries inside can be building by the women's club.
That's right.
And other important things in the community as well.
Well, I'll be interested to hear, be hearing more. And thank you so much for taking the time to come in this evening and happy birthday.
Thank you, Tracy.
Is there anybody else who has anything else to say under visitor comment at this point? If not, we're going to keep moving forward. Under mayor reports, I have an appointment to the museum board, which you see on pages 13, 14. Rebecca Berry is recommended by the, by Robin and the museum board. And so I offer that to you.
Well, I can endorse her highly. She was on the library board for...
She is on the library board.
She still is. Yeah. And a real good person to have. She has a lot of history here in Independence and so I can vouch for her too.
Great. Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Thank you. I take that as a motion?
Second.
And I have a second. Is there a discussion on this appointment? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Under mayor announcements, I am privileged to be able to, tomorrow, to be able to give the state of the city address in front of the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce with Mayor Oberst from Monmouth. And we'll be doing that tomorrow at high noon at the Independence Cinema. And I really look forward to the opportunity to do that. And I really want to take a moment and thank some of the staff members who helped me with some details and a few wording. Some people don't realize that, you know, a lot of this gets written before the crack of dawn and by the light of the moon. And I really did appreciate some of the help I got. And so I want to just publicly thank, thank all of you who helped. I really did, do appreciate that. And for those of you who can't make it, Karen will help share a copy with all the council members and we'll get you a copy also. And under reports, Mr. Klein, you have things for us today.
I have a couple.
Great.
Mayor. So follow up from our last meeting, Ken, Mr. Ken Harris was in here. He brought in a letter, he recommended a letter looking for some possible consideration of speedrun and changes in various locations. Was referred to the district department who forwarded on to ODOT for their review. ODOT came back with a letter essentially just saying that they really did not agree with the requests, explaining in detail what their position was. We're going to take that to our safety committee and just work through that a little further. And I think Mr. Harris has been invited to that meeting as well. So there'll be some closure on that process. We can report back if you'd like. Yeah. Independence Station, as you know, March is getting on its way. We still have no, we saw, there other than that. So moving forwards that day, we'll see if that goes back. Stay close. City Hall, the second payments and the down payments due this Friday, we haven't recently witnessed that happen. And so we will proceed with closing on that part. So that's a $25,000 payment that should happen. So while walking through a little bit of what's going on with the hiring process on the news chief. First round of interviews are scheduled for, I think, from Friday. There were telephone interviews where we had 23 candidates, we were down to 12 at this point. We want to narrow it to a smaller group for onsite interviews. So that, that is what that process is. That first round is what we're going to accomplish. We are looking at a process at this point beyond the first round of interviews. Sometime in the second or third week of March, we will have a two-day process. The first day, and this is in comparison to Mayor, I think, I think it was a great system, we had a deal, was to do a kind of a community gathering in several locations. Tendively, we'd like to meet in, at the church, at the book library, book library, excuse me, and at the, at the airpark. And we think that the community, different parts of the community, get an opportunity to interact with the candidates. So those will be no format in particular, they'll just be one-hour sessions at each location. I would ask that one or two councils be at those locations to help one keep on coming to, to give you an opportunity to meet the candidates as well, ask any questions that you may have. We will have comment cards available at these locations so that you can leave yourselves and leave your thoughts behind. The next day, we need the more intensive assessment center, we have a separate panel for that, made up of several mostly monetary professionals. Three from police, the police believe, one district attorney, a civilian, and a consultant. I'll be there probably on an observational basis. Their charter, their task will lead to narrow half to the top, two, three candidates will go over consideration. So that's the process as laid out, and just so you're, there's been some confusion with this in the public, and you may want to make sure that you understand that the charter is what sets up essentially the hiring of the district, by the city councils and some communities, I think, have said that that's not what our charter provides. So just so you know, if you have people asking those questions. That's pretty much it. So that, we expect sometime within, you know, the first, second, third week of March to have those, that more intensive interview process and come to some closure group there after. So questions on that? And that was a handful of information.
I didn't hear that with first location, that these community...
Catholic church.
Oh, Catholic church. Okay. Thank you.
You'd be sending us reminders, you know, dates. You'd be sending us reminders about the dates and locations and all the times and all that stuff?
Yeah, I, I will. This is just an overview, but yeah, you'll have something, you know, in writing, explains and something, I mean, the rest sort of thing, it's not that I'd always share, if we had a little bit more of a business or something like that. But that's the essential process. And so it's, it'll be a duller process than the candidates might have there in town. Our second meeting with Tribe, the meeting here is, I think, Monday, the 4th, I think, a bit of a plan for that, or so we're sort of...
In particular, are we, have you had that? The Tribe meeting?
Yeah.
I haven't heard that from you yet. So we're working, working to nail down the date, but I think it's going to be...
We think we're 20 minutes. So keep it, keep it tense, maybe use a darker pencil and don't use the...
Oh. So it hasn't been confirmed?
So you can erase it or listen.
She thought it would work, but she had, she had to go talk to our council. She was going to do that yesterday.
So we're looking, sending the center on the clock in the morning. And we have a, we have a couple things, we also have an outline, but format will one do that morning. It won't be a working meeting for you to, for one point, to create that conversation. We'll talk some more about that. Several of us had the pleasure of arriving over to Kaiser this morning to listen in on the 7:00 AM, to listen in on the Mary, Mary Public Safety Council's presentation on their issue concerns with the, the marijuana specialty regulations in the issue in March. So we had that out today this morning. It was interesting. I don't know if there was more than that to share with you at this point, just to know that being happened, I'm super pleased with their, our things was there and well. We are working on a couple leases at this point, the revenue market needs, we're back and forth with that document. We're working and that's to get control of the park. And at this point, what we're looking at, this is terrace property, I'm asking, I'm sorry, the terrace at the park. We, that, they're asking for an extended lease, they will come back with this optional year step, be terminated, be charged, many more, more long-term than that lease, unless you object to that. I don't see any reason not to. Just been successful, it's a real good office, so. We have more and more demands on that, more and more requests for use of the park. We're looking at a couple things this summer that, you know, might be kind of fun, exciting. More and more, we're looking at potential conflicting uses because everybody wants similar spaces. So we're sorting through that, but that's just, you know, getting work with success and unadvantage. So we'll work through all that. We're working with Verizon for lease space on the tower, on the water tower. We have pretty good understanding of what financial terms are, and we're just going to get through one side of the grid that presented us and current into something that's that more balanced. It's really bad in the grid that I've never seen before. We'll get there. Mayor mentioned State of the Cities, Saturday, market, if you haven't, on Market Counter for, in case you haven't already, is the wind down, we mentioned that last time, the low issues, enacted this program, committed on their business programs. Should be a fundamental freeze at 7:00 PM. After that, you'll see wild, wild women recite, or wild women effort, and unwomen, wild women show at the air gallery, and then there'll be a poetry, a women poetry competition. I don't know what that is, but it'll be a couple hours from that. Not a kind of student music for us downstairs. Our, our, our gallery we had down there a couple months ago, was still being the way I had. WY did some, started getting interest in our Facebook, which has appeared 900 likes on our Facebook. It's amazing, a few pictures of bad weather too. Walmart, Jack, and that was a pass, but you know, more trouble on our lives, the better, more attention to our Facebooks. So we're working on that. We would get that. We have, we're moving ahead in our efforts to basically open house for places, collaborative efforts with sister nonprofits. No pricing, so I've been down the money. We need a lot, we should have made a lot of help, but we're crossing our fingers, it's not a deal yet. We get closer to them, we will give you all more details. But it's a real nice collaboration with, you know, ALO and Habitat Humanity and a few others, and so good trade, great project we're looking for. We continue to make progress on the River Place apartments, the site of the process. Pretty close to done, as is the, and here, pretty close to done, we're doing the building permits, so there's still a couple issues, they're coming back and forth between the company, but by and large, they're moving forward and they're wrapping up the cost they have, and a lot of them will be here for us very shortly. They're still anxious to get open for the next, next charter for the office, so we're working really hard to make of that. The weather was a little bit upset, so. So we're going. Our, we're making the final steps in our software conversion, that goes live here Tuesday. The 13, we're at Utah, getting some training on this software, so that will be finishing up very shortly, going live. As I recorded last time, the most credit departments like to pay them, or they're just fine. Very key, very key place. And finally, we're just got a little bit earlier today, we're pretty excited, the three donors and the campaign that's seen the G grant application for our, what's our reuse study, and we're just bouncing off of that. Yeah. So that is pretty good.
Great.
Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Great. Good report. Okay. We don't have any unfinished business, let's move into the new business. We have a public hearing and a zone change comprehensive plan map amendment. And I have official things I have to read here, and then we'll have a staff report and then comments from the audience, and we'll move forward from there. So the subject of the hearing, I'm opening a public hearing. The hearing is, the subject is approval to amend the comprehensive plan designation from agriculture to low-density residential and change the zoning on map and tax lot number 8421 DB 00111 from agriculture, AG, to low-density residential. The public hearing before the independent city council is now open for application ZC/CPMA 012013, Willard Levy applicant. Do any counselors need to disclose any conflicts of interest, biases, ex parte contacts or site visits? Do we have anything they need to disclose? Okay, no one had anything to disclose. Oregon land use law requires several items to be read into the record at the beginning of each and every public hearing. And I think staff get to do this, next part. Who pray tell? It's not very often you get to use the word pray tell.
Oh.
Only for you, Mike.
Is that in here, written here?
Here with me, another reference to Florida. Good. The land use state, that needs to be read into the record. The applicable substantive criteria upon which the case would be decided are filed in the Independence Development Code, Subchapter 12.025 and 12.030. These criteria are addressed in the staff report and will be read in summary by staff during the presentation of the staff report. All testimony, arguments, and evidence presented must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria in Independence Compact of Fair Independence Municipal Code, as the speaker believes applied to the decision. That's R S 197.763, excuse me, 5A. Failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue would conclude appeal to the Oregon Land Use Board Appeals Rule based on that issue. That's from R S 197.763 5C. An issue which may be the basis for appeal to the Mayors Board of Appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record, chat, or following the final event during a hearing or a proposal before the city. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the council and the parties an opportunity to respond to each issue of R S 197.763 1. The failure of the applicant, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to proposed conditions or with sufficient specificity to allow this council to respond to the issue precludes an action or damages a certain court. It's R S 197.796, not so good reading when you have a problem, sure.
Thank you. And are you going to offer the staff report? And thank you for reading that, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll add a sub a little bit. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to present the staff report for this land use application. Application was mentioned by the mayor, the file number is ZC slash CPMA dash 01 dash 2013. The applicant, Willard Levy, 603 River Drive, Independence, Oregon. He goes by the name Bill. I think you all are familiar with Bill, active number that he be. He is also here, and will likely speak after you, if he's verification. As the mayor mentioned, the applicant's requesting approval to amend our comprehensive plan designation from agricultural, which is AG, to low-density residential, which is R S, and change the zoning from agricultural, AG, to low-density residential, R S, for a very small amount of the property that he owns, approximately 0.62 acres of the total 6.07 acres. Now, I'm just going to take a break for a minute because the planning commission have a little bit of trouble understanding where Bill's property is, the subject property we're talking about. I created a look back before we made this afternoon, just to help a little bit because what Mr. Levy's really dealing with here is some overlapping zoning designations, overlapping properties, and there are some properties that he's proposing to vacate, and that's how we'll be coming to in the future. So what you have here is, the property is directly north of the Dog Park, so everyone knows where that is. And there's an orchard there. That entire piece is the subject property. The two pieces that I colored in yellow are currently zoned agricultural, and he is proposing to resell those two. One of them has his existing home, one of them has his home, he's proposing to change his home to R S. Of those two, he leave the majority of the property as ag because that does allow one single-family home. So in essence, what he's proposing is, even though this looks like a large piece of property, it's mostly a floodplain, and at most, what will come of this is the existing home will come under a common residential zone, and then need two more building spaces will be allowed. So two new homes could be created with this zone change. And I can answer questions regarding the location and some of the things I have. So the request is to re-sell approximately 0.62 acres of the total. Just a little bit back out of the property, it is, it's currently surrounded by single-family uses or agricultural uses, which is basically the floodplain, and it's now Dog Park too. So it's a pretty low-density use. It's Mr. Levy's intention that he make that way along the provisions of his neighbors. I hope that you all had a chance to look at the staff report. I'm not willing to try to include every one of the roles and findings unless you have questions, so I can refer back and answer your questions hopefully. Staff has, staff has found that the application needs those goals, and has made certain findings. Planning Commission reviewed this application like third or a third. The application's been reviewed by the city attorney, Sparkle's findings. Planning Commission gave recommendation to the city council that improve the application. There is a sample motion in the back. And I am here to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for staff at this point? Everybody have any questions?
I just want a little more clarification on this. Is the orchard, does that go all the way up to, up to here, up to the little yellow?
Not quite that far, but yeah.
But almost. So that, so those plots are really just empty, they're not really, they're not houses or anything?
Those were old, that was an old layout.
Yeah.
From probably 100 years ago.
Yeah.
Before.
Yeah, that's right.
So there are no houses there now.
Okay.
Right.
Additional questions for staff at this point?
Is the property between the two yellowed-in squares, is that buildable at all or not?
Yes.
And will that likely come back for a zone change later on? I'm just curious why it's not...
No, because agricultural, that's sold out, one single-family home.
Okay.
And then there's a home there currently.
Yes. And the applicant would prefer to leave it in agricultural.
Any additional questions? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Karen, any communications we've received that need to be entered into the record?
None received.
Okay. And folks that have wished to speak, I hope you filled out a speaker card if you need to, there's so many out there. Okay. Anybody you wish is to speak in favor of the application? This is your opportunity. Bill, if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to step to the podium and say anything, but you don't have to. You're okay?
I covered it pretty well, so I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Anybody opposed? See anybody opposed? And so with nobody speaking in favor or against, that means there's no rebuttal that needs to be rebutted. So without objection, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is the council okay with that? Okay, we're closing the public hearing. Okay, we're now into discussion. What do you guys think? Do you have any questions? Do you like the idea? Is it okay? What do you think?
So there is an existing single-family residence right here?
Yes, there is. That would be on, it's the little yellow square to the north, and it's tax lot 111.
Okay. So that's lot number one then?
That would be.
Yeah. And lot number two would be the rest of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? It's an action item. If, if there, it's on page 21, if you want to...
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move we adopt the findings. Is that right?
Yep.
Okay. In the staff report, an approved comprehensive plan map amendment zone change 01-13, as recommended by staff and the planning commission.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Everybody okay with all this?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And I just want to compliment council for taking the time and reading all this material in advance. It does make the, the process go so smoothly. And I got to tell you, I've been around long enough to watch other cities where people haven't done their homework, and it, it makes the light, the night go long. So thank you very much.
I appreciate what Mr. Banko did with just color, too.
Yeah, the coloring was helpful, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. I'll just, I'll just add that the ordinance itself, we'll be coming back to you for a, I think it's a double reading, Karen, on the 25th?
Yeah, we'll do it all then.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on to page 31 through 35, council bill amending the Independence Municipal Code on boards, committees, and commissions. Who wants to talk about... Who wants to talk about this one?
Karen, are you feeling this one?
If you would like me to.
Sure, you know more about it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and the council members. Um, before you proposed ordinance, um, that would establish event commissions by ordinance, and make them a permanent commission of the city. Um, up till now, Western Days and the Hop Festival have been established by resolution as a temporary commission. I think it's kind of obvious that they are more permanent in nature, and city code requires that permanent, um, commissions and standards, and so that's what this is, that is doing. The language for rules and regulations found within there were taken from the resolutions that were passed through the years. Uh, there will be some resolutions required on an annual basis, specifically just to establish the dates of the, of the events.
Questions for staff? Yep, okay. Initial comment?
Thank you, Karen.
Okay.
Karen, are you gonna do the other one? Are you doing P O as well?
Okay.
No, we need, we need, we have to finish this one.
We have to vote.
We have to vote on this one. Um, so if there's no discussion, this is an action item. Sorry, I was, uh-
Do you wanna start it?
Somebody start it.
Can I have a, I have a clarifying question, like-
Please do. Okay, go ahead.
Because there is a sentence in the staff report that talks about the, an addition of a requirement to formally appoint a treasurer, is, is that something that is now put into the ordinance, or how is that handled?
Yeah, we are, we are proposing to put that in the ordinance, because these two event commissions, Hop Festival and Western Days, they actually handle cash, and it's cash of the city, and so we felt that actually appointing a treasurer as, from, from their board, because they do that already, handle the cash, and then turn it over to the city, they make budget requests, felt it was important to have that as part of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that currently in the resolution?
No, it is not. That's the one, that is the one addition.
Right. Okay. Somebody start this, please?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, council bill two zero one four dash oh two in full, as the text is contained in the council packet for the first time.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, is there discussion? All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries.
An ordinance amending IMC Chapter Two Administration, Article Three, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, adding Division Eleven, City Festivals and Events Commissions, and stating an effective date.
Okay, the next one?
I move to read the proposed ordinance, council bill twenty fourteen dash oh two, for the second time by title only.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, carries.
An ordinance amending IMC Chapter Two Administration, Article Three, Boards, Committees, and Commissions, adding Division Eleven, City Festivals and Events Commissions, and stating an effective date. And I should note that there was a scrivener's error on page three of the exhibit, um, it refers to a paragraph B, and, um, it should be paragraph one A above. It's, doesn't change that.
In the ordinance?
On page thirty-five.
Well, thank you.
Paragraph B, it refers to paragraph B, and it should be paragraph A above.
Okay. All right, you'll fix that when we get to it.
Yep.
Okay, um, somebody hit the final one, please?
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, council bill twenty fourteen dash zero two.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion, last call. All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, the ordinance will be assigned number one five two six.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, the next one. David, you get to do this one, as I understand.
Actually, this was, uh, we can call for Lori on this one, since she's out here, but we have, we have made a preview, prior presentations on the heat program, on the heat program. This is the resolution that comes with the program, uh, that will really kind of take our, our, you know, form of, of, again, uh, we're looking to start at the beginning as a eager city, as opposed to fit or fabulous, or, or, you know, our, our, you know, fabulous or, you know, not to.
I'm sorry I missed that December-
Should I start again?
City manager talking, take two.
So, all kidding aside, this is, you know, this is not, you know, this is, you know, good for the community, good for, good for our staff, except for, for us, uh, for those who do, try to get our staff on this kind of healthy, you know, healthy lifestyles, also looking to try and find some programs to do our, our codes and like, to promote, you know, quality, healthy, healthy options in the American community as well. So there's a lot of resources out there, this, by going through this whole step, develops more than training, staff resources, comes with, this state program, uh, Lincoln Cities has endorsed this program, they're partners in it, I think the other two cities in our county, or two preseason county, uh, if not three, but the cities are already in effect as well. So I think it's just by and large, and, you know, a great op, you know, it's a great program, I'm glad that, this is step one.
Questions for staff?
Did you say that other cities in our county here, Monda?
Yes, one thousand, I believe, that's where.
Okay. Salem?
All the various levels on, on the case in the process.
Are they eager, or are they fabulous?
I suspect they're just eager, I don't like the eager of any of them, because they are just fabulous. I have been in favor.
In the definite, as the definitions provided by the program, in the text provided by staff.
Under the text.
Yes, Tom.
Have we seen some of the policies that would make us fit or fabulous, or what, what kind of things we have to adopt to get into that designation?
So, I think in the resolution, you see some of that, that I was talking about, you know, and it's a review of our land use, you got to pay all the persons, you know, what kind of multi-modal access, you know, what kind of walk abilities do we have, our rail system, you know, how, how, you know, how low is that landscape, how low is that show? What are we doing, able, you know, new developments to, you know, create connectivity through, through new trail access? What are we doing with parks, what are we doing with more recreation, which is a good life style, we use, we learn, we use, we use, we use.
But it doesn't extend to things like-
I'm not here to talk about that.
It doesn't extend to things like, you know, limiting, you know, software sizes or anything like that.
I don't, we don't, we don't have a big call.
Yeah, that's, we're gonna save our big calls.
We'll go save our big call. We're down here for more than I do, since we're waiting.
If I can add just a moment, I, I think, uh, historically, what these kind of resolutions actually do, is it, uh, says that we're interested in moving forward, it gives us a, a sound financial, a sound basis from which we can write grants to, to access additional resources, because we have the official piece of paper that says, we'd like to move forward with this. And then, and this, this is just a recognition that we, as a policymaking body, have said, this is a worthy goal, we'd like to put our city, we want to promote health and fitness, and it's good for everybody, and it allows a grant opportunity, and they can reference that. Would that be a fair characterization?
I think it's very carries. This, this, this program sort of came with me aware, you know, we were made aware of this program at the last, uh, the conference, and it's had, you know, the lengthy presentation of the, the heat program, I thought it was really, really exciting, right? And there are some very useful stuff, you know, what we're doing with farmers markets, for instance, that is, you know, that's, that's a big part of, you know, what fits into the program, you know, where, where we're going, trying to do this, that was proven up there, that too, again, because it's a big part of this, so, these connections to local and healthy food choices, active lifestyles, you know, as we can rely on skiing.
Any additional questions for staff?
Well, I, I just wanna comment on what Tom said, I kind of agree, um, that, that by involving ourselves in this program, that we won't have to enact draconian regulations about size of drinks, or whether or not you can do, I mean, this is, in order to become fabulous, or-
Actually, once you will be built, uh-
Okay, yeah, I, I think encouraging and getting money for it and everything is fine, but I don't, I'm not interested in having-
For all that, it's the same.
Okay.
It's a, 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 it's a-
Not punitive.
Not mandated stuff.
Thank you.
I would love to make a motion on this.
Thank you, please.
With the, with the caveat that independence is already fabulous, whether so named through this program or not, I move to approve resolution number fourteen dash one three seven four, a resolution setting forth the city of Independence's commitment to put healthy options within reach of all residents.
I have a motion, who would like to second? And a second by Jerry. Is there any discussion? You know, I wanna tell you, it's fun that we can, that we can shuffle and have, and have a good time when, when we're doing stuff, you know, I really appreciate that, you know, we're serious when we need to be serious, but we can have a good time at the same time, and we're, we're having things that are a little bit more fun, so I wanna comment on that. All in favor of the motion, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, motion carries, thank you very much. There you go, you're welcome. Is there any other business that we need to have in front of the council, any announcements, anything that needs to be done?
Yes.
Please.
Yeah, go ahead, she can go.
No, I just have an announcement, the Friends of the Independence Public Library is having a movie fundraiser, uh, at our wonderful cinema on March the tenth, at seven, and there'll be lots of door prizes, free popcorn, and all the money goes to our wonderful public library. If you need a ticket-
So what was that date again?
March the tenth.
March the tenth.
Monday, Monday, March tenth, at seven PM.
I'm putting that in my calendar, because I'm not gonna miss this opportunity.
There's always lots of popcorn.
You can send details possible to get it on Facebook, or not?
Oh, sure.
Do you have the menu?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Well, what movie are we seeing this year?
It's called Courageous.
Oh.
Oh, is that, okay. I have not seen it yet, good, okay. But I'm, I've been told it's wonderful, so.
Well, since you helped be involved with it, it must be.
And the Facebook thing, too.
There you go. Any other announcements, Miss?
I have one.
Oh, yes, please, Diane.
And then on March fifteenth, St. Patrick's is having the, uh, St. Patrick's Dinner Auction, from six to nine.
That's a great event.
Yes.
And I do get to say, I have been asked again to, to be the, uh-
Oh, good.
The auctioneer for that, and I promise not to try to sell the priest. They told me to sell everything. Other announcements?
Yes. You sold part of the floor, you know that, 'cause I bought some.
See, I told you I'd sell everything. Yes, Mary.
Well, first of all, for other events going on, on the fourteenth of March, is the Community Awards Banquet through the Chamber of Commerce, and that will be at Iola Hills Wine Cellars, starting at five thirty PM. Tickets can be reserved or purchased through the Chamber website, but more importantly, before we get to that point, there is a ballot out right now, also accessible through the Chamber website, because the community this year is deciding all of the winners. So please get on the internet and vote, and you can vote as many times as you have unique ISPs.
Okay.
And, um, I just wanted to also thank the, the city in its, and I'm stepping out for a second with my, my net hat right on right now, to thank them for, um, being supportive through the letter that was in the water bill at the end of the month. We had, uh, some very poor business practices going on in town, and the city addressed them head-on, and since that has happened, we have had a number of customers call my net and just thank us for, for alerting them to the situation, and it helped them to understand why they had been almost accosted at their door by, um, salesmen who are now no longer in the area. So, thank you to the city.
Good, good.
Great. Additional comments? If not, somebody send us home.
I move to adjourn.
All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries, thank you.